And Jason, I'd like to also state that I'm available for any other discussion, questions, comments. However, once we get to the short term rental thirty nine, forty two, etc., I'd have to recuse myself and log out. And then at that time, I will have our vice chair, David Iverson, take over and run the meeting. Thank you. Don?
I have to recuse myself as well for any short term rental articles.
So we can do it in two parts. Maybe we can talk about anything not short term rental first. And then at the end, get to that. And I, another question, I guess, Erica and Libby is if we do get to short term rentals without Christie here, we will be out of quorum. So then we, then what do we do? Just Matt?
You won't be able to discuss it.
Okay, wonderful. Great. Okay, so any questions on anything not with short term rentals? Related? Okay, this might be a real short meeting because Joe?
I don't know if it's allowed under the format. Can I ask a question of the select board?
Of course, yeah.
Or maybe it's administration, but I was curious, and I don't have the warrant in front of me, but the article that deals with the eight and a half million dollars for our island homes, you know, design and owners, project manager work. I was curious whether either administration or the select board has a, has sort of a, for lack of a better term, sales pitch prepared for the voters at town meeting. You know, I would certainly the fifty million dollars of estimated cost for the actual construction caught my eye. And I'm just sort of curious, given the, you know, the sort of strong debate we had two or three years ago, when the last time this came up, the town meeting, it just seems to me that would behoove us if we had a good sales pitch to the voters as to why this particular plan that's going to be three or four years later and twice as expensive is a good deal for taxpayers.
Joe and the board members, yes, we are working on a narrative with the video. And it's quite a different proposal than it was the last time around. We're not purchasing any lands. And it's a bit of a different operational model. The fifty million is based on a slightly elevated estimate from two years ago when we had a study done that the board requested to see what it would take to construct a new facility at the current site. And at the time, those costs were around between forty and forty five million. And I think we have not revisited that with a any kind of a firm that does actual, you know, today's dollars cost estimates, but based on other projects and what's going on in the economy today, we think that fifty is probably a fairly decent estimate. So that's what the eight and a half is based off of. And certainly there are going to be objections to a move. And I think the board voted in August of twenty twenty one that after looking at a variety of sites and examining this issue in a lot of detail over the past five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, that this is the best scenario to put forward. I agree, we need a decent narrative for town meeting.
Let me also want to just mention briefly the work that Brenda Johnson's doing and all the socialization with all the different groups. I don't think Joe's aware of that.
Brenda is our outreach person for this project, and she's been meeting with a variety of groups, including the senior center, Rotary, the town association. I can't remember who else, but all of those groups to discuss this project.
I mean, that's terrific. I appreciate that, Libby. Thank you. And I mean, I'm a supporter. I just, you know, we, we as, as the town don't always, I think, project the benefits and communicate, you know, the benefits of these projects as well as we could. And, you know, we've all, we've all been through town meetings where things sort of just get bogged down. And then don't go the way we want. So.
Matt?
Yeah, I, I, I think there's, I've consistently, I have concerns about the town's ability to operate an island home. I support this location. I'm not sure, you know, I had, you know, I'm, I've kept fairly quiet about it because I'm going with the vote of the board, of my board, but I think we should be negotiating the union changes we need prior, and we should be including housing. Because I have severe concerns about our ability to operate it. The hospital's struggling to operate. And, you know, and as we heard last night, the sort of the demand is shifting, and that was predicted by two different consultants. So my question for the FinCom is how deeply did you guys delve into any of those issues?
So Matt, we aren't, we didn't do a referendum on whether there should be our island home or not. The voters made that quite clear. I don't know if, it wasn't last year's town meeting, but it was a town meeting before. And so really, we, we've took a look at it as this is the funding that's needed to do a design, provided the town wants to stay in the our island home business. So I would, I would suggest that there is the our island home working group. And in that working group, they do take a look at this. And if at some point the leadership of the town wants to take a revisit whether we should be in the nursing home business, then that's something that would have to be brought up in a completely different way. That would be my answer. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Melissa?
Thanks, Jason. Lower the hand, unmute all the buttons. So I am a member of the working group, and I have heard Matt's concerns on those issues prior, and I think that we have discussed them tangentially as a part of this decision. But I also think that it's clear that the community has asked for a nursing home, and these preliminary expenses are really to get the ball rolling, unbuilding the city. They certainly give at labor and housing issues which are being addressed in other of town government. So the Affordable Housing Trust and Tucker's getting on formula, different formulas for, I know there's down payment assistance programs now. I'm closing costs, they're looking at potential programs like down payment assistant programs, and there may be various other kinds of incentives or that we have through town government for town employees. Those are all ideas and we'll have on negotiations. I don't think any of those ideas or concepts should interrupt our progress on moving forward with the design of the new island home. And running unparalleled with that is the redesign of the senior center as well. So I think these are all really good investments for us to get started on. And frankly, my last comment on our island home is we cannot wait any longer. That building is in such disrepair that we really need to move forward on this. We've, we've, as a community, spent a lot of time in discussion, and I think it's time for some action. So thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Jason?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Melissa's comments were right on the money, and I just want to kind of echo what she said about the senior centerpiece. I was on the committee, Don was on that committee. And the steps that have been taken since then to get to the our own home committee that she was on, sort of, is sell it as a, it's a back to Joe's original question. He's right. The voters need to know that look like, you know, we sold that when, that we know what we're doing and reusing that property down there at current island home with parking, with future meeting space, all the other things that could come out of that are so positive for the town that it makes the, the overall concept of the moving out home much easier to understand. Before there was like Libby said, the confusion of the land swapping and selling and buying was really, unfortunately, you know, one of those Nantucket things that sort of gets bogged down in people's conscience, and that's what happened. But this is clean and makes a lot of sense. And it's reusing existing land for a better purpose. And, and, and I think that that's the best part of it. So thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Matt. Denise, do you want me to call on everybody? Or do you want to call on your members?
You go ahead, Jason. It might as well. It'd be easier rather. It's just going to be confusing of like Denise, over to you. Okay, me, over to Peter Schaefer. Yeah, okay.
Peter, go ahead.
Thank you. I think Matt had a really good point, and I think we have to start thinking the way he was talking. Every project that's done, housing has to be a component of it. And if it's not, they shouldn't be even approved. I mean, it's, it's to the point now where we sit and we knock our heads against the wall. We're three years ago, we authorized X amount of money, and we've done very little besides buying land. And the prices keep going up, up, up. But we don't really have, I don't think we yet have the mentality that every single project has to have housing. And, you know, yeah, you can say, okay, same amount of people are going to be working there in the new facility and the old facility. Doesn't matter. You guys, if we added four, four, four housing units, that would take off pressure from something else perhaps for the town. So I just think that designing a building of that size without a housing component somewhere is wrong.
Just to comment, I'm not sure where people are getting the idea that housing is not a part of this. We certainly will look at whether housing can be accommodated at that site. The town's lease with Sherwin Commons is a certain portion, the allowable space in the town's lease with Sherwin Commons for a facility is a certain amount of square feet. If we are going to go outside of that, we will have to negotiate that with Sherwin Commons. But we certainly have had that discussion with them. And if there is room on the site to include some amount of employee housing, I think we would have and every intention of trying to work that in.
I don't necessarily think it has to be on the site, though. If you converted some space on the old island home to housing for people to work at the new island home, that would be fine, too.
That, that's a great point, and that can be looked at in the feasibility study that we are also funding for the senior center at that site.
Thank you.
And we actually have had some preliminary discussion about that.
Melissa?
Thanks, Jason. I guess my, my final comment on it is that I do think these projects are being looked at globally in terms of their impact with housing. It may not necessarily always be directly attached, particularly at this stage of a warrant article to a particular project. But absolutely, the conversation that we're having has the impact of housing and how to particularly support town employees and finding a port of, excuse me, affordable places to live. So it's certainly part of the conversation, and I'm confident it's part of the future planning.
Thank you, Melissa. Joe, thank you for asking that question. That spurred a good conversation. Surprised, I surprised myself. Matt?
Yeah, and the other, I just don't want to talk to something Denise said about, you know, sort of, we'll reconsider it if the, you know, if the administration considers that are at the town meeting, etc. And I just meant to make a point, these three groups that are on this call now, we are the, we are it. You know, with the administration, we are the decision makers for the town. And we all have our different charges. The, you know, the FinCom charges to investigate expenditure of any monies by the town and notify the select when in writing as to whether or not, in its opinion, the expenditure is or was justified. You know, that's not, that's part B. Now, part A is about their, you know, is about the warrant article, which we're discussing today, but we all have our part in here. And sometimes I think we end up, unfortunately, we end up in silos, or we hope someone else will do it. You know, but we, these are serious responsibilities that we all take seriously. I'm not saying we don't. But I think, you know, we have to realize it's us, you know, in these hard decisions, you know, so I used to joke, you know, back in the day, oh, what was this? The guy who had the signs at the Rotary? You know, he used to always say, will of town meeting, will of town meeting. And I would say, you know, we've got to bring smart things to town meeting. That's the administration and the FinCom and the select board and the planning board's responsibility to, you know, to have done the homework, to bring something good, not to just go to town meeting and stick our fingers in the air and hope that we've made the right choice. So, you know, so, and I, and I'm not saying that we've done that. But I just think we have to be reminded that the town, you know, these expenditures and the things we do is only as good as the work that we all put into it.
Thank you, Matt. Any other comments on our island home? Okay, that was, it was a good conversation. Any other articles we'd like to discuss? We do have Christie here, so we have all five select board members here. Thank you, Christie, for coming in. Listen?
I'm, I'm going to just recuse myself to open the opportunity for you all to have the conversation on short term rental articles if you want to have them, because Christie's here and she's got a little baby and her time may be limited. So I don't want to, I don't want you all to lose out on the opportunity. I'm going to turn my camera off.
Okay, Matt, Christie, do we have any questions on, on article thirty nine or forty two? Jason, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if we are at that point where we don't have any other discussion on other articles, and we're really going to focus in on the short term rental, then at that point, I will have to recuse myself as well. If we're just focusing on the short term rental now and coming back to other articles, then I can log out and then get informed and log back in. I don't know if we have any other, anything after this, but I would leave that open. Okay, so with that, I would also like to just state, you know, I appreciate, and this is for all the boards, since we have all the boards together. A lot of times, we don't get any, the recognition, and we don't look for the recognition, but I just wanted to say for the record, I for one appreciate all the countless hours that each member of every board donates and contributes weekly, annually, monthly, whatever to the time for our, our community and service and civic duty. It's not lost by a lot of members, and we don't necessarily hear it so much in the public. Every now and then, it makes you feel good, but as we approach annual town meeting, I think all of us can pat ourselves on the back for the, the, the time, the commitment that we give to the town. And with that, I would like to recuse myself and sign off and wish you all well. I will hand this over to Dave Iverson as vice chair to continue the meeting. And if necessary, if there's no more discussion after the short term rental, then he can close it. Thank you all, and good luck. Thanks, John.
Denise, I have to recuse as well.
Sure, okay. All right, so Mr. Iverson is, is running the show now. Hey, Dave?
Hi, Jason, thank you.
Okay, anything, Erica?
Sorry, did somebody else recuse after John?
It would have been Chris Glawacki, I think.
Yeah.
And is Don recusing also?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So I watched the, the finance committee meetings when they reviewed article thirty nine, forty two. I thought it was a pretty good discussion on thirty nine. I thought article forty two, I was surprised how fast you went through it. But, so I don't even know what questions I have. I'm not certain on the validity and strength and weaknesses of article forty two. So I was, I was curious on Denise, what you thought. I just watched it that first time on article forty two, but it seemed to go, kind of go through pretty quick. You didn't have any, any problems with it? Was that your take, Denise?
Yeah, it was, it was straightforward. It was, you know, we had, I watched all the planning board deliberations on it before we even had the meeting and before we had the discussion. So I did, you know, personally, and I'm sure many of my other member, committee members did as well. And the planning board spent, you know, a good deal of time and had very cogent answers as to why they're putting this forward. And it seems to be a appropriate way when it's partnered with thirty nine to get the data we need, to frame the discussion in a positive way, to eliminate some risk for the town and to be able to say, okay, now that this is all in place, now let's go ahead and constructively put in the parameters that we want to have around short term rentals to be able to have the community stay the thriving community it is financially and economically. And at the same time, not become, you know, a ghost town, because it's just people who are only here in the summer, because every other, you know, there's hardly any houses left that people live in year round. So I think that the, the planning board, the planning director and, you know, everybody in, in plus did a lot of homework on it. That's, you know, from my perspective. And I'm happy for my other finance committee people to chime in and add their two cents. And with that, it was, it was very straightforward. Not a lot of deliberate, not a lot of deliberation was needed, Jason. Thank you. Does anyone else from FinCom want to add to what I said or contradict what I said? I'm also good with that, as you know. Remarkably quiet today, so.
Matt or Christie, did you have any comments or questions on article thirty nine or forty two? Or forty, forty one?
Well, I'll, I'll comment. I've, you know, as, as you know, I have, I have a little bit of concern about gathering data second. You know, in, in, in an ideal world, we gather data first and base the decisions that we're making on the data that has been gathered. And I think I'm worried that we are, you know, that we are using the threat of litigation or the actual litigation to, you know, move maybe too quickly and make a mistake that will actually seriously harm our economy. And so I look at this, this entire situation with a slightly different lens and look at it slightly differently. And you know, and I think, and I look at the commercialization, you know, and I, and I watch the planning board meetings, and I watch the, you know, finance committee meetings, but I look at the, you know, increased commercialization as a serious threat to our year round economy, to our year round residents, and eventually to the island. If you look at data, you know, actual data and what's happening in places similar to us, Colorado, etc., they, you know, they're, they can't open their businesses. There's schools that can't field sports teams anymore, because they're, you know, they have been taken over by short term rentals. And so I think that that, you know, I hope that that information was, you know, examined by, you know, by everybody when, before we made the decision. You know, I hope people have done their homework on those issues as well. And if not, you know, we, we, we as a board have to look at the, the total, the big picture and the total picture, and we, we're going to kind of be up against it to make a recommendation coming up. But, you know, I'm, I'm leaning toward, you know, a motion that has, that says, let's put this on hold and get the data before we do this. I'm very concerned that once we approve this, and we've gotten a lot of letters to this regard, once we allow short term rentals everywhere by any entity, anywhere on the island, it's going to be very hard legally to claw those back. And I'm not sure that we're going to be able to, you know, my own opinion, I'm not sure we're going to be able to claw those back through regulation. And so, you know, so that's, and I'm not convinced, what I've heard so far, I'm not convinced that we understand the ramifications of this fully yet. And so, you know, so I have a slightly different opinion and I, on this, at this point.
Thank you, Matt. Dave?
Thank you. You know, I appreciate Matt and I've had some discussions about this, and I appreciate where he stands. It's just not clear to me what, what information we're looking for, because I feel like we have a lot of information, and really maybe the only information we have is how, how much of this, what we call commercial use, which I think what he's saying is people that have multiple units in the rental field. So I, I think that, that we have a lot of information. We know where they are. We know how many there are. So as far as not having information, I'm not sure I agree with, with that. So, and furthermore, forty two is really just codifying what is already happening. So if we put this off for another year, it's just like we passed forty two in all honesty. So, I mean, I think that it's, in my opinion, it's a first step towards regulating them. We're taxing them. We're taking tax money from them, yet we call them illegal, which is kind of odd to me, a whole, you know, on a different level. So I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna take the fruit from the forbidden tree, we, we really need to codify them. I think that on a couple of occasions, we've asked town council in meetings about grandfathering and about clawing back. And it was my understanding, and Matt may correct me here, but is that if we regulate them through thirty nine, grandfathering doesn't necessarily have the same bite as it would if it was, if it was regulated through zoning, if that makes sense to you. So I still feel strongly that it's, it's the proper path moving forward. Thank you.
Matt, did you want to respond to that? Let's see how the hands go up.
Yeah, David, if we have, if we have it, what, you know, how many did we have? How many? You know, if, over the last couple of years, how many year round homes, how many rental homes did we have? And, you know, what's the trend been over the last three years since we started tracking it?
If I can respond, Jason?
Yeah.
You know, Andrew did a bunch of research on that, and, and I can't tell you the exact number, but he did both. I believe our five and our ten, and, and I'll have to have him send you the information. But I think if anything, we actually, it may sound weird, but I think Andrew will back me up on this. I think we actually gained a year round housing unit, believe it or not. And I think Leslie's on this call somewhere. Maybe she could chime in on, on those numbers if she's familiar with them.
I am aware that Andrew did a lot of research in some of the districts that are, you know, that tend to be more year round in nature. And he did research going all the way back to two thousand and eight, I believe, and found that there was essentially, you know, no change in the number of year round dwelling units. And again, I don't have those numbers handy. We could send you those numbers, but it was negligible.
I, I also, if I can continue, Jason, just real quick. I'm not discounting at all our need to preserve local neighborhoods. I think that it is a real problem and a real threat that we as a community need to look at. I just don't, I honestly see that taking place in down in other avenues as far as deed restrictions, buying of deeds, building affordable housing, ownership units. I, I think that those will have a bigger impact on year round living than than, than kind of squashing the STRs and then damaging our economy at the same time. So I'm not denying there's a problem with year round housing, but I just don't believe that, that limiting STRs is the path. Thank you.
Matt, can we go to Peter?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, Peter?
You know, I agree with what Dave just said, and from day one, I've been waiting for somebody to tell me how by limiting short term rentals, we get more housing for year rounders. I've never heard an answer to that made any sense. Maybe we end up with another pocket park, but we don't end up with more housing. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. I think the way I, the way I have heard it is it's not, we're not going to gain any more housing, but we're going to stop losing housing, maybe stop the bleeding is, is what I, is one, the opposite of that.
But I don't understand what that would do. We stop losing housing. So somebody who has a house that they were renting out for four hundred, for forty thousand dollars a week in the summer, they're not going to all of a sudden year round rent it out for twelve hundred dollars. It's not going to happen.
No, I think some of the situations are someone's renting a house to someone year round. They sell it to somebody who now puts in short term rentals, right? We don't have the data on how many that has happened. Is it a lot? Is it a little? I think that's some of the, the fear that I've heard.
That's the data you were talking about with Leslie, though. I think that the data, the data does not represent a large loss in those year round zoning districts in parts of the island.
Peter, if you're, if you're done, I was going to go to Joanna.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Joanna?
Hi, thank you. I, yeah, I don't think those things completely equal out either, right? I think that I share all of these concerns, right? I think that short term rentals are a problem. I think the way that it was explained to me or the way that I understand it as sitting through these things. It was explained to me or the way that I understand it as sitting through these things is that Article thirty nine will be able to be. The regulation piece that will make the dent in the problem, right? Um, I don't think that, I think, I think this is all very complicated and convoluted, right? If if someone buys a house, they are not going to, if someone buys a second home, it's not, it is taken out of the year round rental pool. Right? That's the reality because they're going to be in it in the summer and um, or for two months of the summer and they're going to rent it for two months to help them with their mortgage. They're not going to decide to, or they're going to rent it for ten months and be there for two months. They're used, they're doing some sort of rental calculation to be in the home that they bought. Right? We know this, right? This has been going on for years in Nantucket. So I think that. The place where this gets very complicated is how do you then figure out what the relationship is to the number of houses that are available for year round rentals? And every single time some home gets purchased, doesn't mean it comes out, right? That's like a whole separate calculation or issue than how are we going to limit? Short term rentals and what impact does that have on the housing stock in the short term? And if we have short term rentals, here's the third piece of it, how do they get regulated in general, right? You know, I, lots of other communities across this country have figured out ways to do this. There are many places that limit short term rentals to thirty days. Right? Uh, we know this, right? And then people figure out a way to chop that thirty days up and share it with their family or do whatever. People get around the rules, no matter what the rules are. The thing is, is that we as a community, whether or not we decide to vote on basically short term rentals by right. Need to figure out how do we regulate them to have the least amount of impact on the island? And the most benefit to the island's residents. And this is where I feel like we've gotten lost in this issue. And part of that reason is that we have this lobby group that keeps trying to come at us with like these very intense. Pieces of governance, right, essentially, that addresses one particular narrow concern. And it doesn't help everyone. And so what I see this as is an attempt to do something to address the problem. It may not be the exact right thing, but in the absence of that, doing nothing is still a decision. Right? And so I can't advocate for doing nothing. This might not be the best solution, but. To I think Dave's point, people are doing this anyway. So if we can figure out a way to make thirty nine meaningful. Right? Then this will benefit us. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Well said. Matt, you saw your, you ever hand up or is that from before?
I handed up, but go to other people. I'll come back after.
Okay, Christie and then Barry.
Thank you. Um, I was just gonna add in Peter's comment about, you know, how do you kind of convert the short term rentals back to year round housing? And it was a comment made by a community member when the select board was discussing it, that there's really no way to stop this. Um, unless you make Nantucket unattractive for people. As long as we have really low. Real estate taxes, people are going to want to come here and invest property here. So kind of, eh, these articles kind of aren't going to stop that. Um, that's, that's not the intent, I think, of these articles. And I think Joanne, Joanna made a really good point of. What is the problem that we're trying to solve? And we've kind of lost that that thought process. And I think this is going to be a way, as Joanna was mentioning, to kind of start that process. If we have something that says. You know, it's allowed by right, and then we have the way to put a regulation in, then it gives the opportunity for the community to decide. What it is that short term rentals are doing. Like I've said on many occasions, we have one in my neighborhood in Park Circle. There's just one out of the fifty units. Most are year round rentals. And that one short term rental bothers us in the summer. But that's, that's their right to do that. And we had to figure out, okay, how does the condo association or is it in the neighborhood? Talk about it and make it so they put the regulations on or as a community, how do we, how do we talk about it? But I don't think that not putting these article forward is the right approach.
Thank you, Christie. Barry?
Um, let me defer to back to uh Matt for a minute, if you would be so kind.
No, the the, if you read, yeah, if you read sty- stylo decision at the end, it talks about. They made, the court may have made a different decision for places that had, that had short term rentals as a use. And that's us. So I do think that we are on decent standing in re- in regards to uh the issue. There are, uh, you know, some people do it, you know, through numbers of days, some communities do it by areas. Uh, and the, I'm not so much worried about what's happening now. When I look at this, I'm worried about the future. And I'm looking around and I'm looking at rugged road in those areas that we think of as year round places. And I'm seeing those lots, when they carved up, sell for, you know, million plus, million and a half. Those are not going, you know, back to, you know, employees. And so when people, you know, go to town meeting and say, you know, no one's calling me from Mid Island, well, actually they are now. They're calling from Mid Island and there's nothing available for normal people. And I think that's, so you know, I'm fine with where we are now. I'm 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 frightened of where we'll be if we, you know, if we make, you know, codify this. As an allowable use by anybody, any entity. And I, and I'm also, when I, when I think about it. You know, I I get a little worried, you know, when we're, when we're getting letters from large corporations giving us attaboys. You know, VRBO and Travelocity and all these guys telling us how wonderful we are. You know, I kind of, the hair on the back of my neck stands up a little bit, saying, you know, I'm not so sure that they're on our side. I don't. I think they'll, they're they're gonna take aim at the real estate companies here. You know, they're they're gonna undercut the realtors too. You know, and I've had people who rent tell me how that, how that happens. So, you know, so I just think that we've got a. That I think there's a way to do it so that, you know, individuals, whether they be off islanders or on islanders. Could do some sort of rentals, you know, in controlled fashion. But I think. The direction we're heading, you know, it reminds me of the Outer Banks. You know, i- i- and the commercialization of it, that's what I think we should be trying to uh. Rein in and avoid. And I don't think that we have done that with these articles. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Barry, you ready?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, you know, ju- just a few thoughts here. Uh, you're not gonna stuff the genie back in the bottle, okay? The the rentals, short term rentals have been going on since the latter part of the 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 eighteen hundreds here. Um, I I came across this wonderful document from the town. Um, Andrew had shared it with me. And it, you know, even at that juncture, you know, eighteen nineties and stuff. The town was being marketed as a place to come for short term rentals. Maybe they weren't called that then. But there, make no mistake about what was there. The other thing we have to be careful of too. Um, which which bothers me a little bit is, I mean, this is still America. People have rights here. To be able to do certain things. And when you begin to infringe upon those things, you've got to very carefully determine. How is it we're, we're, we're going to get there to get certain things done? You know, as much as I would love for this to be a data first system. Um, it it just never entered the equation, but here we are today having to now reconcile that. Um, like I said, make no mistake, this is not new. Um. Data is going to be really the the saving grace here of of how we begin to tackle this situation. Right now, I hate to say a lot of what we're dealing with out there is conjecture and anecdotal data. And that's what scares me. Because people will take a certain chunk of that and extrapolate it out with no concrete foundation. One or two things do not make the entire. Their component of it. So at least with Article thirty nine. We're gonna, we're gonna try to get somewhere to be able to get a much better rounded sense of what's going on. Figure out where it's going on as well, too. What does that begin to look like? And now the next set of questions come up are, how do we deal with it? You know, you're dismissing the thing too of like, well, you know, it it robs from affordable housing. We don't know that. That's anecdotal at the moment, okay? Otherwise, I would love to challenge someone. Give me the concrete data. To be able to tell me exactly how much we've lost to that. It's not out there, at least that any of us can find right now, but I'm waiting for it. So I I would encourage you that really do do support this. And allow us to do it. And if you're worried about things like affordable housing. What's to say after two, three years of doing this and gathering data? We decide that, you know what, the income, the income structure on this is just totally out of whack. How about we add an additional amount to every STR that's out there? To be able to support the affordable housing structure that's in place financially. At least you'll be able, at least you'll be able to make a very strong case for it at that point. Once you have those data driven systems. Um, you know, and that's a big thing of mine. You'll, you'll hear me argue time and time again at the planning board. That before we make decisions, it's really important to have th- those data streams out there to be able to quantify and then justify. Where we're heading to things. So I I I would strongly encourage you, support these, do not be afraid of what they will bring. By not supporting these, now you need to be scared. Now you need to be very scared about where it's going to track off to at this point, because you're not just gonna shut it down. Now without good concrete information. So thanks for listening. Um, let me stay on the side here.
Thanks, Barry. Dave?
Thank you. Just uh, Barry, a lot of great comments there. Um, I, just a couple of things. Um, I think Joanna said it maybe is that. Doing nothing is the same as passing forty two. So basically, all these uses are happening now. So I it's confusing to me why everyone is so concerned about it. Thirty nine gives us the structure to restrict them in the future and and. And I was concerned about what was the the kind of the, the breadth of how we could do that and and. And I asked town council in a few meetings, what, what, what are we able to restrict through thirty nine? And and the answer I got back a couple of times was, basically, the sky was the limit, that we could. Restrict these in every way, shape or form without a super majority vote. At town meeting. And I think that's important to remember, is that we are now able to restrict land use. Through a town bylaw, which is is kind of unheard of. So I I think that people need to also focus on that. We. If we pass thirty nine now, we will be able to restrict the use of STRs. It through the health department, through the board of selectmen and through town meeting. Um, which, I I think, what more do we want? Everyone's saying we want to restrict, we want to control. Well, thirty nine gives us as a community the ability to do that. And and I think that it's very important that people take that. In as they think about this. We're getting rid of the super majority to restrict land use. And bringing in a simple majority, at least in town meeting, and then we have the health department and the select board as well. So um. I I'll leave it at that. I think I I've said enough. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Christie, did you ever hand up or do you take, take it down?
Take it down. This is like very similar to Dave. I just, no, I I really agree with that and I see where Matt's coming from and I'm trying to. Kind of see where that that middle ground is, because we're, we're all saying, or at least a lot of us are saying, we want to stop the commercialization. But putting forth, or not putting forth these articles or. Trying to restrict short term rentals isn't going to make rugged road not go for a million dollars. It's still, those lots are still going to be out of the price point. Around community. So if we, we have to have a separate conversation about housing and how. You know, things like down payment assistance programs and things that the Affordable Housing Trust is working on, and that's very much separate. And. Again, with the Nantucket being, you know, the, the brand that it is, there's nothing that's going to stop these prices from going up. And restricting it isn't going to be the answer. So I think we have to be kind of having dual paths of figuring out our housing, but. Also not just tying it to short term rentals and saying that restricting short term rentals is going to fix our problem, because I think. If this, if these, um, say we got shot down at town meeting, it's not going to fix the problem overnight. It's still two completely different conversations.
Thanks, Christie. Denise?
If tomorrow we stopped all short term rentals on this island, the only people who could afford to be here. Would be the people who can afford not to rent a house, right? If you wouldn't need affordable housing, because we wouldn't need half a third, you know, we wouldn't need two thirds of the workforce that we have. So I I realize it's a draconian statement. And it's, at the end of the day, it's what Christie just said, the economy is the economy. The value of the property is the value of the property. It's what the market will pay. So I think the affordable housing topic. Is getting addressed on many dimensions within the town. Is it enough? No, but is it enough kind of anywhere in America? No, it's not. And so I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing everything we can. In fact, we have. Uh, over seventeen million dollars in this year's warrant towards affordable housing and, you know, forty plus in prior years. And Brian can happily correct me on that number. So the town is investing in affordable housing and in different ways of getting to affordable housing. And the short term rentals. I've yet to have anyone tell me, other than maybe two or three groups, Marriott is not running in here. You know, we do not have, there's only, I looked at the link last week of the real estate and there's only sixty six properties available for sale. No one's rushing in here and buying those sixty six properties and turning them into a big commercial enterprise with, you know, Disneyland type features. So again, it comes down to data. Data is our friend. Facts tell a story, you know, facts kill opinions. And I strongly believe that forty two and thirty nine together, you know, shaking hands. Will give us a a framework that whilst imperfect, at least lets us go forward in a constructive way. And then the right brains can all sit in a room and come up with, here's how we'd like to pro- propose it to the voters. And the voters say, yes, you know what? This is the community we want to live in under this structure. And we want to welcome all the people who are only here part time because they're part of the richness of this community as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. There is your hand up again. Sorry, Nat. Let's go to Nat first. Never heard from Nat. Yep.
Yeah, thank you. And everyone's comments have been great. And Christie, Christie brought something up. Um, Denise stole a couple of my comments, so I gotta switch over to some different notes. Christie brought up something pretty good that I haven't heard said, uh, except one time. She brought up her neighborhood in an association that they have and how they can make that decision. And this got brought up at one of our meetings. I think I asked John Georgio this question, if neighborhoods. Could form a neighborhood association? And I believe that he said they could, because other, you know, this is a new thing, neighborhood associate, you know, homeless associations are new. In certain subdivision, I mean, they really, you know, like Noshop and. You know, and like Nasha Quistit, that type of thing. But I'm talking about like just say Mill Street, New Mill Street. You know, Candle House Lane, you know, wherever there's a problem or something, they could do that, okay? Again, though, what we're dealing with now is something that has been, never been discussed. Never, like until the last couple of years. I mean, think about how big this is to just discuss after a hundred years. We're trying to reset an issue that we've never had a conversation about at all like this. So even during the time where the rooming houses were trying to tax the rental houses. There was never a discussion about the the zoning part, what was actually legal. Under zoning in as a, as a, as a, as a residential use. That never came up at those town meetings that I know of, okay? But I think another thing, speaking to the housing part and future solutions and. How much money we're investing and Tucker's work is unbelievable, uh, for the housing trust. Is there's a lot of future solutions that we haven't even done yet. And one of them is the buy down deed restriction that Dave brought up. There's gonna be ways to capture these properties before they're sold to off island buyers, because they're the only ones, as Denise said, that can afford it. And there's a lot of locals have cashed out of their houses and left the island. I'm not gonna bring any names up, but we, we can all probably think of a few. And um, and a residential tax exemption for year round rentals, I think, should be discussed and put on the warrant next year. Just like we have for residential, with, you know, you live in your house, you get a twenty five percent. We gotta do something to encourage year round rentals. We got to do something to encourage year round rentals. I do it, I don't get a penny. So there's a way to do it. There's a lot of little things that we can do and that we're going to come up with, but we have to start. Now with getting this short term rental thing, so it's reset, and that's what this is. So I appreciate everyone's work and all the comments that were made were great. But we got to start somewhere. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Nat. I'm going to go back to something Joanna said on, we're trying to figure out how to make the best decision to. Pull down the negative impacts on the community and find ways to increase the positive impacts on our, I think you said residents, but. And we're trying to figure out the rule. So that's, I like what you said, Joanna. So I think we're trying to figure out what are the tools that we're trying to create for ourselves to do that, once we have more data over the years. And I think, I think what I'm seeing is like, everybody is, is kind of thumbs up on thirty nine and forty two is the question. So can we do all, all this with just thirty nine? What will forty two not allow us to do or allow us to do? And that's where I, I hear different opinions and from different people. Even John Giorgio is kind of saying, he's giving us his, his best guess on certain things when I watched the planning board meetings. Barry?
Actually, you brought up an interesting point. I want to spend a minute on VRBO and Airbnb, but. But let me not get off your topic here. Leslie, are you out there? Need to unmute, Leslie.
I'm here.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so through you, to Leslie, can you spend a few moments? And Andrew, I thought, did a really good job about articulating between forty two and forty three. And hoping you can bring that same conversation back to the table here with us. Because it was short, sweet and very eloquently put.
I'm not sure that I can match the eloquence of Andrew. I will try. So Article forty two, I, as Dave Iverson said earlier in the meeting, will essentially codify. You know, what's happening now, which is, you know, the allowance of short term rentals and any dwelling unit anywhere on the island. I mean, it does make some specific references to, um, special permits in apartment buildings and workforce housing. And places that we definitely, you know, do not want to encourage short term rentals. And, and that's something that does not exist right now. In Article forty three, that is much more limiting. And it would require. A large segment of the short term rental owners to have to go to the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals process is, you know, not only time consuming generally, but for. You know, the level of application load that this would, you know, generate would. It's just not sustainable. I, I don't know how the board would possibly deal with that. Forty three would allow short term rentals as accessory uses. Residents would be allowed to use their primary residence as a short term rental by right. But non-residents would have to prove that it's an accessory use. And that would still require relief through the zoning board of appeals. So. You know, I, I think forty three in effect would, would dramatically change, you know, the short term rentals that are happening on the Nantucket.
Dave?
I, I guess, and the question is, and I think town council would have to answer this. Can, i- if. If short term rentals are not codified in our zoning. Law, by law, how do we regulate them? I, I, I think that's, that's an important question. I mean, can, can you regulate something that's not on the books legally? I, I think, I mean, we're already taking tax from it. So I, I think that those are important questions here as well. I mean, I, I think, I'm not a lawyer, but I, I, again, we need to codify them to regulate them. We need to codify them to stop senseless lawsuits. We, we need to, to. We, as a, as a community through zoning, years ago decided we didn't want big resort hotels. Okay, that was our choice. Now this is, this is the consequence of that. And I would argue that, that we would have a much different island without short term rentals. And, and I can't say it would be for the better, in all honesty. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Barry?
Yeah, sorry. I, I just want to go back to one thing I was going to bring up before. Thank you, Jason, for bringing that up. Because it really is important to differentiate between these two things. You know, the, the other thing is the way forty three is structured, at least I read it. Is you're not only going to overload the zoning board of appeals, you made the town itself. By virtue of the way it's structured, maybe also looking at a lot of litigation as well too, if it's enacted over a period of time. The non-resident voting taxpayers identified that as a potential issue as well too. So it, forty three is laden with some things that I, I really would worry me about implementing. And if it does come to fruition. I'd probably say, hold on to your bootstraps. But one last thing I wanted to bring up is, it's very easy to say VRBO. And Airbnb are actually part of the criminal element, shall we say, that is allowing. All these STRs take place. I think that's terribly misdirected, because, you know, I, I look at models like Airbnb and VRBO. And what they did was they took the idea of just doing a planal rental. And made it really easy for the common person to be able to put that out there. And that's pretty damned unique when you think about it. They removed, they basically took over a lot of all the sticky areas, tapped a fee onto it. And said, here we go. We're actually going to give you a way, not only to, to, to legally make you feel comfortable. But we're also going to give you a way as well too, to market it, so that in your venture, you can be successful. They were innovative. And, and I'll, I'll say, you know what? Because prior to that, you, you either had to market it on yourself or you would have to have had to gone through. You know, if there were a rental agency where you lived, that's great. A lot of times it would have been realtors that would wind up doing it. These two models came into place and they changed the way rentals were being handled. So I'd say innovative. I would say that they are, they're necessarily contributing toward the problem. You know, so I, I just wanted to throw that out there as a little food for thought as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Select board members, any other comments or questions you have for planning board members or FinCon members? Okay, I think it looks like we're okay conversation wise for thirty nine, forty two. Any other comments from, from finance committee or planning board on this? Okay, Matt?
Are you letting the public, any of the public, I saw a couple of people catch, catch in and want to comment, you know, allowing that?
I, I think this is a time for finance committee, select board, planning board to have conversations. Because if we allow the public in, which I do always want the public come in, it'll be a different thing. Libby?
I just wanted to mention that Andrew, myself, Roberto and town council were kind of charged with putting together an outline. Of what potential regulations could contain under, if Article thirty nine is adopted. We're working on that and that will be in your packet next week or Wednesday.
Libby, is that also if forty two is also adopted and or not? Just thirty nine?
Thirty nine goes forward.
So next week, we have a, a comment. It's our last chance for select word, make any comments on, on the warrant. Really quick, Denise, can you remind me, on forty three, did, did the finance committee take no, take no action?
We, um, we, we supported the, no, we said motion not to adopt. Motion not to adopt that, just, but hold on a second, Jason, I've got it. Maria, you're going to have it right in front of you, but I'm pretty sure it was motion not to adopt. I don't have my little spreadsheet. Hold on, I'll have it.
It's a support of the planning board motion, which is move to take no action.
Okay, but no, forty three wasn't a planning board motion. Was it? Was it a zoning? Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Libby.
And planning board has a comment. We can put it up if you want to, but.
Oh, yeah, FinCom supports the planning board motion. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to check. I, I have a tiny computer. I usually have two or three monitors where I can have it all in front of me, but I don't have, have it. So thank you.
I have paper, Jason.
Printer where I'm at either. I can't print anything out. Yeah. Anything else? Any other articles you might like to discuss? Okay. Matt?
I'm just teasing, but I was going to ask the FinCom to talk about Article seventy one and gender equity, but we'll wait for town meeting for that. Unanimously, they're in favor.
It'll be quite easy for the voters to make a decision, Matt. Let's put it that way.
Joanna?
I just have one thing because of this week and doing the workshop that we did on Monday and Tuesday. And knowing that it's not too late for technical amendments. And maybe suggesting that we should consider putting in some additional funds. For some of the things that we talked about at the workshop, so that we can advance the coastal resiliency plant. Right? I'm sure this is nothing that Libby or Brian or any of the people who were at the workshop haven't already thought about. But since everyone's in this meeting, I thought it would be a good thing to just bring up and suggest.
Thank you, Joanna. Anything else? We all can get out of here and, and motion to adjourn one by one, if you like.
So moved.
Second.
Right, so Kristi, did you just motion select board to adjourn?
I did. Because Peter just moved on to the select board. We'll miss you, Peter.
I thought that was you, Denise.
Kristi and I sound exactly alike.
Actually, I don't think finance committee is a quorum any longer.
We're no longer a quorum, so we're just.
Don't even have to adjourn.
Hanging out. We don't have to adjourn. So we get to skip it.
What could be better?
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Okay, all is in favor. Roll call, Kristi?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Jason, aye. Thank you, finance committee and planning board. Appreciate the conversation, your time.
I guess, do I need a motion to adjourn too, please? Roll call, who do I have here? Nat?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.